For prayer and pledge. Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to approval of agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Citizens' comments?
We have one tonight, Mr. John White.
Welcome, Mr. White.
Basically, I'm here representing Fairfield Court, which is gonna be backing up next to the Red Bud Springs subdivision, which is the Habitat subdivision that's gonna be built. Back last year, with our, some of our concerns, the Habitat people met with us and kind of promised, made a few promises to us when they were at this stage that they hopefully will be keeping. Just wanted to bring those up. They basically promised to have a buffer zone between the three or four properties that are gonna be backing up to their properties. I think the cul-de-sacs are gonna be kinda going together. There's gonna be one, their cul-de-sac and our cul-de-sac, the turnaround. They agreed that there should be a, I think it's either a 50 or 100-foot buffer zone between the properties in that area. They offered to do extensive landscaping in that area. So there was a, kind of a area where we wouldn't necessarily see their properties as much. They wouldn't necessarily see our properties as much. Kind of a privacy barrier, if you would. And I was also interested in what their plan was to save some of the mature trees that are backing up to some of our, in our neighbors backyard area. That was a concern that some of the neighbors wanted me to bring up tonight for the meeting. And that's pretty much all I have to say about it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. That's all we have?
Is this open for discussion, or?
Oh, you're welcome to call me back if you'd like to, sir.
Does anyone remember any of the answers to those questions? As far as, I can remember them discussing it, but it's been so long ago, I can't remember the details on it. Does anyone else in here know?
If you want, we can dig into it on that item, business item, and we can try and bring those up. Red Bud. That's okay. Anything else? So go to approval in minutes, March 12th, 2019, regular meeting. I'll second. Anderson first, Jenkins second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. All right, we'll move into item one. New business development plan, Red Bud Springs subdivision. 14 proposed lots on 8.35 acres. Property located at Highway 96 North, MAP 22, parcel 134.07, R20 zoning district. Property owned by Habitat for Humanity of Williamson County. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read in staff comments for me.
Sir. Number one, sidewalks required on both sides of proposed streets, as well as along the frontage of existing streets, for example, Highway 96. Number two, the proposed curb and gutter connection to Highway 96 appears to tie into the center line and not the edge of pavement. Number three, is Lot 13 intended to be a buildable lot? Number four, open space is no longer required for conventional R20 zone developments. Number five, what are the intended ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the multiple retaining walls? Number six, although the detail of the notes appear to be correct, the street trees area is shown on the plan to be located behind the sidewalk and should be located in the grass strip between the back of curb and sidewalk. And number seven, finally, please note that if development plan is approved, a review of the engineered construction plans may generate more engineering comments as a result of the additional design details included in those plans.
Thank you, sir. Would you represent, representative, if you could state your name for me, sir?
Yes, I'm Randy Chaplan, the surveyor on the project. I was asked by Tasha, who's now working for Habitat, to represent her here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
And what we're asking for is a variance on the sidewalks. We understand there was a rule about the sidewalks being on both sides of the road and along the front. But due to the topography on the, that'd be on the west side, I believe, it would, wouldn't be conducive for a sidewalk. It'd be just a steep hillside, one side. It'd probably be more dangerous to put the sidewalk there for someone to accidentally fall over from the sidewalk. We're asking for a retaining wall on that side and along that, along the, that side. And we're also asking for not, not to have sidewalks along Lots 2 and 13. Most of the problems that were mentioned there have been addressed on the plans here that we have submitted. The cul-de-sac that went to the edge of the road was a mistake. The, the trees in the side, in between the sidewalk and the, and the property have been put in the correct location. But other than that, we'd ask for at least approval on this, with the exception of the sidewalks having a variance. Lot 13 is also, is a lot and would, it's also part of the drainage easement as shown there. So they would be responsible for the maintenance of the drainage easement.
Mr. Butler? Just as a question of that, they, they who would be responsible for the?
Could you clarify that? So you're saying the property owner of Lot 13 would be responsible for the?
Right, it'd be their property and they'd be responsible for the drainage easement.
Basically, Lot 13 is going from where it starts all the way back to the back of the property to the cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir. It's one large lot. I believe the acreage is 1.329 acres, I believe, or 1.23 acres.
Mr. Chaplan, you may have not been present for the meeting with the Fairfield Court residents, but do you recall anything about the buffer on the backside towards that Fairfield? I know you have a buffer towards the front, and I think that was at the request of a property owner there, if I remember that correctly.
Unfortunately, Mr. Reynolds was the representative for Habitat, and he's no longer works for them. And no, I wasn't aware of it or hadn't been informed of it. I have, I see no problem with putting a buffer there and to maintaining some of the old growth trees there.
And a quick comment for our staff. There's several lots where the setback is pushed back to get the 100-foot. Is that still an R20 approval lot if the, if the road frontage is not 100 feet? Does that question make sense?
Right, I mean, the, the road frontage doesn't have to be the length of the, the width of the property. It has to be just where your building's setback is where the length is required of 100-foot.
So the way I, the way I interpret and read it, it has a road frontage requirement for an R20 specific, so it'd be 100-foot of road frontage?
At the building, at the building setback line, sir. But not at the road frontage, no, sir.
Is that correct, staff?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I guess I don't really like the way it's manipulated to, to be pushed back. I think we even changed a recent development that had done that, where they had pushed their setback line so it didn't meet the width requirement, and so they lost a lot out of it. So now your setbacks are different, so you have a house 35 feet and you'll have a house, it doesn't say how far back those others are.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
May I ask two other questions? I know Mr. Chaplan's going down the list of comments. As it relates to Lot 13, I have two, two specific questions on that. I understand the answer was the drainage easement would be the responsibility of homeowner on Lot number 13. My question would be the same for the detention pond on Lot 13 as it's drawn and the retaining wall. The retaining wall seems to be effectively from a few feet within Lot 13, extending down through, basically ending between Lots 12 and 11. So I'm curious, who would own and maintain the detention pond for the subdivision? And who would own and maintain the detention wall, or the, the retaining wall?
The detention pond would be a responsibility also of Lot 13, maintenance and so on, to keep it clear of trash and debris. And we can state that in the, in the restrictions for that lot.
What if they don't take care of it, though?
Well, then you can come back to them and, and because it's in the deed restrictions, and come back to them, against them.
I can see the city's gonna end up doing it if, you know, if the person in Lot 13 doesn't do it.
And my-
Doesn't sound like a good situation.
And my concern would also be the same with the retaining wall.
My, my concern is, this is Habitat for Humanity. These are people that need help with a lower-priced home. And so we're supposed to be putting them into an area where if they're handicapped or if they're disabled or if they're gonna be permanently in a lower-income bracket, you're giving these people a lot with a lot of exterior responsibility that a person that needed a Habitat for Humanity home probably wouldn't have the ways and means to take care of. I just feel like that's a sorry design.
I think it doesn't really necessarily matter who it is. You're putting a lot of responsibility on a person, on a private property owner to maintain the drainage easement that they may not necessarily understand. And I know it's been done before, but we've also had problems before. So I just, that is kind of worrisome. And then that, is that retaining wall, how close is it to the, to the road there?
I believe it's, it's, let me ask Mr. This is Mr. Masood Fathi, and he's the engineer on that project. Let me ask him that question, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The footing wall is a few feet, maybe about a couple of feet from the right-of-way, maybe one feet or two feet from the right-of-way. So it's, it's far enough that the footing of the retaining wall stays within the property owners. It's gonna be taken care of by two properties.
What are you, what are you citing as the right-of-way, 10 feet or?
The right-of-way, total right-of-way is 50 foot.
For the road, so that would include 10-foot past the curb, is that what you're saying? So it'd be like 12-foot off the curb?
I don't know how far it will be, I can't recall it. But yeah, just about, right, about 10 and 12-foot from there.
As far as the maintenance, I, I don't know how much maintenance there is on a retaining wall, but I would assume that the property owner would be responsible for it.
Are you talking about weed-eating it and mowing it and so forth?
Taking care of it, yes.
Mr. Chaplan, if that retaining wall were to fall, which they, it happens to come down, you watch out whatever that may be, the homeowner would then be responsible for replacing that wall?
That would be my understanding, yes, sir.
How tall is that wall? It does get tall several feet, but the remaining wall is maybe almost 12-foot tall.
Is there a fence along the top of it that will also have to be maintained?
There would be a handrail or a guardrail on top, yes. There would be some safety feature.
I just, I honestly can't see putting that kind of responsibility on somebody to say, you gotta take care of this. And if that thing fails, that could be tens of thousands of dollars for somebody that has, has got a house because it's more affordable to them. I mean, I don't see how, I don't see how you could do that. You're gonna insure it for them, or how's that gonna be taken care of?
Whoever buys that lot has to agree to it and has to legally agree to it. That's gonna maintain the detention pond, the structure in the detention pond and the, and the portion of the retaining wall that's in his property.
And, and what if that's not completely and fully explained to them by the person selling it to them?
It'll be part of the deed, part of his deed.
And this, and this is a first-time homeowner, and there's a good chance this is a first-time homeowner.
It's possible. We did the same thing over at Eastbury and Green, same, same scenario, let's handle that.
Potter, what is the process if this retaining wall were to collapse? How does the city enforce on a private property owner by deed to go fix it? I like a simple answer, thank you. Mr. Chaplan?
Yes, sir.
So now, now you see the problem. You're saying this person's responsible for it, but we as a city can't enforce it, according to council. So what do we do then if that collapses? And I assume it's there for protection of the road and those other things, correct?
Right, it's, it's in order to make the road level or in that particular area because of the steep topography.
And the road is gonna be the responsibility of the city?
Correct.
So what it feels like to me, if that collapses, all of a sudden the city has to get permission from a property owner. I assume there's an easement, but we would have to pay to fix it.
Unless they created a homeowners association, which I'm not sure if they would or wouldn't. I'd have to check into that.
Mr. Potter, do you have a suggestion? What a better way of dealing with this would be?
Well, I mean, Mr. Chaplan mentioned one way, and that would be if there's a homeowners association. There's no way of guaranteeing that that would happen. And if the homeowners association somehow contracted with the city that they would be responsible for these improvements. I don't, I can't think of a way, Commissioner Burks, as I sat here, to hold anyone responsible for that.
In my understanding, Mr. Potter, homeowner associations tend to just end and dissolve. Is that correct?
They have a lot of problems.
Especially in a situation where we're about to come out a lot of money.
That's correct.
Mr. Chaplan, I have an issue with this. Putting that expense on the city, because in reality, that's where it would be. And you can, again, put a homeowners association in, but there's no guarantee that, that homeowners association will stay in effect. So it sounds like you're just asking the city to be responsible for this wall and any expenses that may go along with that in case of an issue. Same with detention ponds. If the person doesn't go in there and clean it, fills up with debris, sediment, all of a sudden it's not being maintained.
Yes, sir.
Which would probably lead to problems with the wall.
I can see the potential of that, yes, sir.
And unfortunately, we tend to have things go wrong.
I've got, how many Habitat communities have a homeowners association?
That I don't know, sir.
I don't think he would know that, no.
That's what I'm thinking, I don't think any of them do. So I think you're saying something could happen that would, in fact, probably never happen.
But it sounds like what we're saying is that we need to come back with another plan on this and that won't require retaining wall and better maintenance on the drain then. In which case, I'd like to withdraw this plan at this time so we can redesign it.
And Mr. Chaplan, I believe I remember Mr. Reynolds coming back to us and saying when he met with the homeowners at Fairfield Court that they had had a meeting and they were talking about doing that landscape buffer. Again, I don't remember the length of it at this point, but I, I would like to see that included since that was promised to these citizens.
Yes, sir, I agree on that.
When you bring it back, if you can just make sure that shows there.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplan. And you do have those notes, the staff comments, to go ahead and review to possibly try and capture before. You have that list of the seven staff comments, correct?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, perfect. And like I said before, I was impressed when, when they took the time to, to talk to the Fairfield, Fairfield Court residents and then now to come back. And it's almost like you've pushed those houses back farther to be closer to them. If you could just, like Commissioner Burke said, just revisit that to try and make sure there's a happy medium in that.
I think we'll bring it back and try to have a better plan in, in mind here that y'all can approve on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, item two. Final plat, Willowcrest subdivision, phase two, four proposed lots on 2.74. Property located on Willowcrest Drive, MAP 22, parcel 66, R20 zoning district. Property owned by Habitat for Humanity of Williamson County. One staff comment. Staff makes a favorable recommendation to the planning commission to approve the final plat of MAP 22, parcel 66, Willowcrest subdivision, phase two. Mr. Chaplan, welcome back.
Thank you. Again, we're just finishing up the final four lots in the back of Willowcrest for the other approved lots in front of that. And that's why we're asking for its final approval on that, sir.
Thank you, sir. You don't have any questions or like to make a motion? Move to approve, Mr. Power? Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Anderson? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any post? Thank you, Mr. Chaplan.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Item three, concept plan, Columbus Cove Townhomes. 28 proposed condominium units on 3.42 acres. Property located on Highway 96 North, MAP 22, parcel 165.1. Commercial general zoning district, property owned by Jonathan Caldwell. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read those comments for me, please.
Sir. Number one, please provide a copy of the recorded ingress egress easement referenced on the plan. That's parentheses here, DB 7522, PG 326. Number two, is the intention to utilize the existing driveway location for the camp property? Or will there be a new connection to Highway 96? Please note that TDOT approval will be required for either scenario. Number three, please note that the proposed, the proposed access drive will be required to be constructed to city street standards as called for in section 1-113.107 of the sub regs. This includes, but not limited to, suitable turnaround area at the end of the parking lot, for example, a cul-de-sac, sidewalks along both sides of the access drive for the full length, sidewalks along the frontage of Highway 96, street trees, et cetera. Number four, the current zoning of the parcel is CG, not C1.
Do we have Mr. Caldwell present? I don't know if you have a copy of those, but if, if you could. Item one, I guess there's an ingress, ingress, egress, exit for that access to that property? Any questions?
Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
I assume you read the staff review for this time?
I was not.
Oh, there's been one more couple.
We've got, we've got staff here that, that would have been in that.
At the end of the parking area, I assume that's where they're asking for a cul-de-sac right there. What is that shaded area sticking out, about a 45-degree angle on that parking lot?
I believe that was a dumpster, if I recall, dumpster pad in that area.
So I assume the fire department felt it would be problematic to get back out of here? Just wanted to ask for a turnaround?
Yes, sir. This is mostly a sketch plan at this point. We just want to be sure that before we have major expenses of surveying and engineering and design work and so on, that the board is, is on board with us before we start that phase. So what you're looking at can be changed from what we're, what you're seeing here. This is just a sketch. Nothing written in stone here. Just an idea, a concept that we're asking the board, is this permit, permissible with your zoning and, and rules and so on?
Is the purpose of this development is to have individual owners for each unit? So it's not gonna be a complex, it's just all rental, you know, one entity?
Each, each property will have its own yard and space. They'll be enjoying, they'll be sharing at least one wall. But the property owner who bought the property would have a front and a back to the sidewalk, so it's right, they're out to the park.
So each unit would be sold individually?
And the backyard area, it goes past the 20-foot setback, is that deck? Is that just yard, is that a, or patio?
Most likely, it would be just some type of small covered patio or just something. And like I said, all of this is extremely preliminary. We're just trying to make sure before we have ended this that we're not wasting our time. Dumpster pads, the manipulation of the street, manipulation of parking and all those things, we plan to work with you guys to get it the way you guys, everybody wants it. But we just want to make sure that this is something that we should, you know, is still moving forward. My understanding, we would still be coming back for preliminary approval.
I guess if you could clarify the kind of the process of the steps, the concept plan. Next motion would be a construction layout or preliminary. So is a vote tonight is just to necessarily give them a green light to proceed forward or give them feedback or?
Yes, you'd just be giving, there would be no requirement to take any action as far as a vote. It would basically dialogue back and forth to see what information could be conveyed to developers as far as what may be preferred to move forward.
Thank you, sir.
And I understand it's not set by any means. I was trying to get a general idea of what y'all think you want to do.
Yes, sir. No, no unit would share roofs. These roofs would be broken over each building. That way, if one roof's bad, it's not the neighbor's problem. All that would be separated, and they would own their roof as well. And like I say, we just, you know, if we move forward, we just want some assurance that we're in the right place with you guys and this is a doable deal and that, you know, we're just moving. As long as we comply with the request, as everybody else does.
Are you thinking, excuse me, do you have any kind of idea on price point? Or have you gotten that far? Or the exterior type or anything like that?
Yes, ma'am. They would definitely be, I'm guessing, we would probably be, you know, until we actually know the lot and the unit sizes we can get per building, then we would target that. But hopefully, we're running to, you know, 1,500 to, you know, maybe 13 to 2,000 probably. It just depend on each building. If we have space there to make a figure, we will. That'll all be determined by parking, I'm sure.
Garages or no garages, do you know?
No garages.
Okay.
I would say these are probably in the price point of hopefully 200,000.
What about storage for toys and other things that people have? What, what kind of storage facility?
Hopefully, they would use inside their house and closets and their attic space and things like that. I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't make it, move on a building anything where they use away from their property is stored or?
Well, what about bicycles and things of that nature?
That are shedded behind them or something. Closet in the back and?
And it's pretty similar to the, the products that we have over here across from Tractor Supply, for reference. I don't think there's- I think there's, some of those units have garages on the backside, but several of them are just condos or townhomes, individual for reference.
In, like, the ones over in Scarborough Village?
Scarborough, yeah.
The most recent ones that back up to, is it Old National Road? I don't know, did they do anything for storing their loads, or, I don't know, they didn't have a garage?
But I guess we'd be open to suggestions as long as it, you know, made sense within our price point. I wouldn't want to, you know?
You open the area and have a place where people can store their own belongings.
Like, for instance, a?
Have a carport, you could have a utility shed in the carport, something like that, fair?
And we can kind of?
I'm not, we are not opposed to possibly putting, or, right, we're just so preliminary into this, we don't really know. If I tell you, I don't want to tell you, I'm trying to do something, it's, I'm just, I'm really not, we're just slowly easing into this, and, you know, we'd like to make it nice and do what we can do.
And if we get to that point, we'll see construction plans or things, and so you'll have a better idea of the layout. I think right now, this is kind of a higher vision of, is this concept, the multi-use in that area, something that would fit?
Mr. Butler, a couple, just staff, just some discussions we had, just briefly. A couple of things to, and this does not create any issue for the subdivision, but just as a point of reference, on the side setbacks to 20 feet, where the roof line goes back to the 20-foot border along there, as a matter of zoning, that area would need to remain open, open air. We would not be able to have a covered or closed structure within that spot, so the backside of it, be it a patio or grass area or privacy fence or something, would just need to remain open. So that would help as far as just having the open space in the back of each lot. And then, there would be some, need to be some discussion about a rezoning to RM12 to get it in accordance with the zoning, but that will be standard as a part of that. So our discussions were that rezoning, making sure that the backside, the open area remains open air, be it again a patio or some, or something to store bike or other play things, and then the cul-de-sac in the end. Those are the things that we know we discussed that we're concerned, and I think those are relatively simple as we get forward in the process.
Mr. Collins, this is actually zone currently CG, correct?
Yes, sir.
Commercial General. And I believe my reading is they could actually do multifamily inside Commercial General already. Is that correct? Under the supplemental section, is that right?
You could, the only discussion, Commissioner, we've had about that is given that these are going to be individually owned, then it just makes, from the zoning side of internally, we discussed proposing that be RM12, simply because it's individually owned and not multifamily units, so to speak, with under one roof, is how we write it that.
Okay, and I guess that was my question. What makes it, would this actually be considered multifamily because it is separate roofs? I mean, is it?
No, sir, they're individual, they're individual homes, just like any other subdivision, they're just butted up against each other. Part of, I would assume, and I certainly don't want to speak for the developer on this, but I would assume there would be some sort of HOA, given the fact that if you're going to have three or four units combined together, that if you have a roof leak or some other thing, that's going to affect possibly more than more than a person. Obviously, this is going to be a private drive, they will be responsible for the roadway maintenance, and they'll keep within that thing. So just generally speaking, again, not speaking for the developer, but the RM12 designation would work if they're individual units, and then some sort of HOA that would fund those maintenance and repair items going forward.
Fair enough. I think townhomes are a nice option to have in Fairview. I don't think we necessarily have enough of those. There's people out there that want a home that don't want to have any maintenance really associated with that. So I think it's a good choice to have. So if that's what you're trying to find out, if that's something we would approve based on that, I think it is a good choice and good option.
If the, you know, we build homes here in Fairview and just price points alone and then have a young son who's just got married, and his wife would love to have a house, and you guys look around and you know what's available for Fairview, and so that's kind of what spawned the idea of what can we do that's affordable to where we don't have to get $350,000 for the cheapest thing that we can put out for somebody to buy. And our intentions are for it to be nice, you know? I don't mind. My son and his wife live in one of them. If you'll look at what we've done through in and out Williamson County, everything that we've done so far, we've attempted to do over and beyond to make it as nice as we can, it's kind of our character. And so moving forward, we do everything we could with you guys, to, you know, if it's a fancy and storage area in each backyard, then that's what it is, or whatever we can do. We want it to be nice, and we want it to operate and everything flow and work well ourselves, so we're eager to get going if you guys will give us the green light, we'll get this stuff together and get that proper, ready to go.
Make a motion to approve, move forward, whatever.
If we make a motion, what is the, what is the action? I guess it's just a motion telling them that we have interest or that we see fit or need or?
In the interest of caution, I would suggest that you just don't simply make a motion that the developer simply accept the feedback and bring that, bring that something back that befits the conversation that was had tonight, simply because a motion could give the appearance of something was approved, and we certainly don't want to do that, and I don't think the developer would request that.
That's perfect.
Motion to move forward with their?
Just withdraw your motion.
Just withdraw my motion then.
That's, that's fine. It's a bit confusing, don't they? That's fine.
Okay, well?
I think you got, you have the staff comments, you got some feedback from that, and then I think, I think there's definitely a need for the townhome product, so.
That was our biggest thing, is to make sure we weren't wasting time, you know? I don't want to get started if it's not, if you guys don't feel like it's something that benefits the city to where, you know, I understand you, you know, you have properties that really don't fit the criteria, and I don't think that's what we're presenting. We have a little issue getting in there.
Yeah, I mean, we have to go through TDOT and get approval on the driveway, of course, and all that will be functioned.
The most economical next step would be to put up for rezone for RM12, and then if that's approved, then you have the zoning to fit. Wouldn't you say the next step, I would just try and submit for RM12, you don't necessarily have to have a full set of plans, just the zoning?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys.
Your turn.
That's confusing. Next, we'll go to item four, preliminary plat Sweetbrier subdivision phase four, four proposed lots on two acres. Property located on Sweetbrier Road, map 22 parcel 130.03, R20 zoning district, property owned by Philip Caldwell. Mr. Jennings, if you could read the staff comments for me, please.
The earlier phases of this development do not have sidewalk on this side of Sweetbrier Road. The proposed sidewalk for this phase will be perpetually floating as parcels on both sides have previously been developed. The planning commission might consider discussing alternative measures with the developer that could potentially provide greater pedestrian connectivity than what is being proposed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Caldwell, welcome back.
Thanks, sir.
Where are those sidewalks on that new one? I remember that we were going to only put them on one side to run them back to 96. Is it on that side or on the interior?
The sidewalks that are there now are all the way around the interior of the subdivision.
Okay. So those would just be those four lots there?
Mm-hmm.
Can you put like a handicap ramp at the end of that and across the street? If across the street's not done yet, to where you have, we could cross there, or? Does that make sense?
No, I didn't, I didn't really follow, I'm sorry.
Like, if there are, if there are sidewalks across the street, you could put a handicap exit to the road or the curb cut, that would, that way you could access across the street to connect to those. I'm digging.
That's okay. We had discussion about this today in staff meeting, just looking at some options, and certainly this would take some communication and work between the planning commission, the developer, and the Board of Commissioners. That said, we have talked in this meeting, or in this, before this board and before the BOC, about the establishment of some sort of sidewalk fund or other mechanism to make improvements to our maintenance of sidewalks throughout the community. What we discussed at staff meeting today would be if it was amenable to the developer, given the fact that this, there is a requirement that sidewalks be installed on these three lots. However, given the fact that they effectively would be floating and have no connectivity, what we discussed was requesting of the developer that rather than install those sidewalks, that a in-kind donation to the city be made for what would effectively be the cost of those, and that would be the seed money for the city's sidewalk fund, which would give us the ability to start a sidewalk improvement, maintenance, and repair program within the city. We would also, as a second part of that, propose that at a later date in a greater form to the planning commission, so that as these things come up in the future, we have an option to offer developers so that we can move forward in that manner. Now, obviously, if we did that, if Mr. Caldwell agreed in this instance, then we would need to go to the BOC and establish that fund as a part of operating with the city, and that will be a part of our ADA compliance program that we have. So as a solution to be discussed, and certainly this will be debated or discussed between the planning commission and Mr. Caldwell, but we did consider that to be an option that I think would benefit the subdivision and benefit the city in this case as an opportunity to move forward. So with that, that's what we would be offering is some sort of alternative.
And so this could be approved and then let that handle before the final plats voted on? So you could handle it in-house or staff to come up with the number or?
Yes, what we would do is just determine either through Mr. Caldwell or the city's engineer, what the construction cost would be for those sidewalks on that spot. We would simply then open a bank account, that would be the seed money for the city's plan going forward, and then we would adopt by ordinance, the, or at least by resolution, the city's sidewalk maintenance improvement plan, so we could go forward perpetually after this development to make arrangements going forward to ensure that we're in compliance with a variety of laws and things we need to make improvements on throughout the city.
I have one question. I am in favor of what you're talking about. So these four lots will not have sidewalks, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. If that's approved, then we, the city, the staff would request that there not be a requirement to install sidewalks on those lots in favor of the starting of that fund.
I'll attempt this. I would make a motion to grant a variance for lot 33, 34, 35, and 36 of Sweetbrier Springs, phase two, to allow them to not have sidewalks, and in lieu of the sidewalks, that they make a donation to the city for the construction cost of those sidewalks after a consultation with the city engineer, and those monies to go into a newly created bank account, they'll be used as seed money for a sidewalk repair and improvement ordinance, which will be submitted to the Board of Commissioners.
I think you excelled at that.
Thank you.
That's first.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, I have, just a little bit now, I just recently read something about lawsuit against the impact fees in Williamson County, and they passed, or said that they were legitimate. And when you're going to create a sidewalk fund, to me, that's exactly what impact fees are designed to do, is create funds to protect yourself or cover the impact of new developments on the, wear and tear on the existing infrastructure that's in place because of the new development coming in. So for me, I'm for what you're saying and what you're doing, but also, and we're not part of the Board of Commissioners, so we can't tell them what to do, but I, impact fees would enhance what you're trying to do with this sewer, I mean, with this sidewalk fund.
Yes, now, we would, my recommendation to the BOC is that this is just going to be a sidewalk maintenance and repair fund and not a, and not an impact fee. Impact fees have a little different type of regulation. Obviously, we want to be, we want to be careful with how we do that, but the purpose would be to enhance what we have as a city in lieu of a new sidewalks being installed. We would be careful with that language, make sure we're, we want to be responsible to the developer and obviously to the city as we go forward with that.
So it's only going to be used for sidewalks?
That's correct.
Did the staff already talk to Mr. Caldwell about this too, or?
Just now, sir.
Okay, so he just heard it now. So the question is, is Mr. Caldwell, is he receptive to this plan?
I was wondering that, too.
Okay, so it could be a very long time, or, I'm not making any plans right now to build on any one of those four lots. They are just there, and I have the two acres, so the rest of everything across the street's a half acre, so I might as well do this. I would be open to that as long as it's not same price as a sidewalk, because if it is, I might as well give the people the sidewalk across the front, and, you know, if there's some way to work that out. But my only concern would be if there was a requirement for a sidewalk, how long does it take before, because you'd be able to do that as you built the property, right? That's the way it is now. If the subdivision has a sidewalk, we do them when we build the house.
Yes, 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 and yes. Yes, I think, obviously sidewalks are a difficult issue. We would certainly be in favor as a city to simply negotiate that with Mr. Caldwell, to make sure that he's comfortable going forward with those things, and that we don't do something that inhibits what would be the otherwise natural growth of the subdivision. So if the motion remains as the same and the second is, that we simply would negotiate that with Mr. Caldwell, bring that back to you and let you know what that was. We'll also present that to the Board of Commissioners so they understand where we are as well. So we certainly want to be respectful of Mr. Caldwell, make sure we're not penalizing him, and at the same time, attempted to accomplish the goal of both bodies.
Excellent.
So, does 11, 12, 13, and 14 have sidewalks? So there is sidewalks on one side?
Yes, sir. Everything on the inner loop of that goes all the way back to 96. There's no sidewalks currently in the whole subdivision, but with the phase two development, now there will be sidewalks that go all the way to 96. But on that side of the street, there's, you know, there's a few other properties that are, you know, a lot of big mature things, and I wouldn't, you know, exist in houses, so it'd be a bad place for a sidewalk, or it seems odd to have just a sidewalk in front of those. So whatever we could work out, I would definitely be open to it, whatever makes the most sense. And here we are again, I've got four lots there, ultimately, I got to get approval on them, so what I need, whatever I have to do to work alongside of you guys, we'll get it done.
Sir, any additional questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you.
All right, item five, rezoning Otter Creek Springs subdivision, 102.12 acres, property located on Old Nashville Road slash Taylor Road, map 42 parcel 78. Current RS40 zoning district, request for R20 zoning district, property owned by Otter Creek Holdings LLC. Staff comments, staff makes a favorable recommendation to the planning commission to approve the rezoning of map 42 parcel 78 from RS40 to R20.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
If I may, on this item, I apologize, I'll try not to discuss any more items after this. At the risk of sounding presumptive, I would submit to the planning commission that this measure is relatively a cleanup measure for the city, and I'll explain where we are on that. You may recall that this subdivision had two phases. Phase one, which is the unshaded area just north or above, and then the shaded area which you see there. As this subdivision came into reality over the last two years, there was some confusion internally between staff and the developers, engineers. As this subdivision, uh, came into reality over the last two years, uh, there was some confusion, um, internally, between staff and the developer's engineer about the process for which this, this property had been annexed and rezoned. The property that, that is unshaded just above this has been annexed and rezoned in, in the city, within the city. Uh, the shaded area has been annexed, but there's some question about whether or not it was properly rezoned from, um, RS forty to RS twenty. So the measure we had before you tonight is effectively, uh, the staff and our engineers' request is a, a documented confirmation of that rezoning. Uh, nothing has changed with the development, nothing has changed with any proposal, or any work, or any things to be done in the subdivision. We just wanted to err on sound of caution and make sure that we had proper documentation for the rezoning. Uh, we believe there was conversation at both the planning commission level and at the board of commissioners' level. However, that conversation, um, that was effective approval, approvals for, as conversation, was not a voted on approval as previously thought. So, the pro- the request we had before you tonight was brought about by staff as a clarification measure on behalf of the city, rather than a request on behalf of the developer.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, any additional? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any posts? Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion on that, but this, for staff standpoint, was the right thing to do as far as procedure.
Item six, acceptance of the city of Fairview twenty forty comprehensive plan. Staff comments, staff makes a favorable recommendation to the planning commission to approve and accept the city of Fairview twenty forty comprehensive plan.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Yes, sir.
I just want to say, again, one more time, I think it's outstanding that the city has done this, and, uh, are now going to have a, a tool to work with, that, uh, team is, is favorable of, and, uh, that's all I think I need to say.
Where's the town center going to be?
Right here.
Is it?
That's the plan.
Until public.
We'll have to work towards that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posts, thank you. Bonds and letters of credit, item one, Sweetbrier Springs, letter of credit expires April sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Spoke with the developer earlier, he said he would have that to us, uh, on or before April sixteenth.
I'd make a motion to call the letter of credit if it's not renewed by April sixteenth of twenty nineteen.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posts, Mr. Carries, item two, Pepper Tree Cove, performance bond expires April, April twelfth, twenty nineteen.
Uh, similar to one we had last month, I believe, uh, developer said that this is a continuous bond, and will get us something in writing for that. Uh, again, we will, we'll see what we get in writing, uh, between now and the twelfth.
Make a motion to call the performance bond if something's not provided showing that it is a continuous bond or renewed by April twelfth of twenty nineteen.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any posts? Thank you. Item three, Fabline Machinery, set bond for new construction, staff comments, engineer recommends a site reclamation bond in the amount of thirteen thousand.
Make a motion to set a reclem- a site reclamation bond in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars.
Second.
First, second, any additional staff comments? Good? Any additional? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any posts? Thank you. All right, reports for discussion and information, city planning staff, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, don't have anything tonight, thank you all for being here and being prepared and ready to go, thank you all for being at the meeting earlier, I think that, uh, twenty forty plan's going to be a good thing, I think it's going to give us direction, and, uh, like everything that was said earlier, if we put our all into it, uh, we can definitely help Fairview out within the next few years.
Sir, city manager, Mr. Collins?
What Mr. Sullivan said.
The city engineer, city attorney, Mr. Potter? Go to communications for the planning commission members, Ms. Qualls?
Uh, I'm sorry, I couldn't be here earlier, I had to work, and I just want to say I missed you all so much last month. Sorry I wasn't here.
Hope the trip was good. Mr. Anderson?
No other comments?
Bauer? Mr. Kelly?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Burks?
Uh, a couple of things, uh, Mr. Collins, is the vacancy for the planning commission on the next board of commissioners' agenda?
Uh, it will be, yes, sir.
Will be, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We, um, we may have that on a, at the work session as well, agenda, so that can be considered there, but it will be on the, um, action agenda and likely the, uh, work session agenda as well.
Yeah. The last thing I want to say is, I, I took the time to actually read through this, um, comprehensive plan when it came to us, and I assume everyone else has or will. It's a lot, I mean, I guess it's why it's a twenty-year plan and not a next-year plan. Some of the things are in our control, some of them are not necessarily in our control. Uh, city center is a great example, we can try to promote that and help that along, but it's a property owned by individuals, so we have to talk to people to help them buy into that concept. Sometimes we'll be able to do that, sometimes we won't, so it's a plan, it's not necessarily a set of marching orders that have to be adhered to step by step. As was mentioned in the workshop, this is something we have to look at every five years to make sure it is going the way we want it to go, and if not, do we need to make adjustments? So, that's something we'll need to keep in mind going forward, that that does happen, and that's all.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Blade?
The, uh, steering committee and the city staff have hours invested into the implementation, the design and implementation of this plan, and I'm so excited that, that you all see the benefit of that, and I thank you for your support and, and for voting to adopt that plan tonight, thank you very much.
Sir, Mr. Jenkins?
None tonight.
I'll echo Commissioner Burks, Mayor Blade, very excited to have this going, also wanted to tell you guys about, Williamson County is working on their twenty forty plan, there's a consultant report of growth trends at the library on Monday at five-thirty, if anybody's interested in going, and just go and sit and listen in, kind of hear what's going on around us, um, and that is all I have, so I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.